Got a lot to cover, so let's get going. So in accordance, so item number one on the agenda, call to order. In accordance with the Open Public Meetings NJSA 10-4-6, adequate notification of this meeting has been provided by advertising, in the Courier-News, and posting notice in the Board of Education Administration Building and District Schools, and filing notice with the Borough Clerk. I hereby call to order the regular public meeting Tuesday, February 25, 2025, in the Lincoln Middle School Cafeteria, 400 Denellen Avenue, at 7:00 p.m. This meeting is broadcast live. For details, check out www.denellenschools.org. All right, at this time we're going to move on to item number two, roll call. Mr. Pepe, could you please call the roll?
Mr. Anderson?
Present.
Mrs. Condit?
Present.
Ms. Ibec?
Present.
Dr. Gendrono?
Present.
Mrs. Howard is not here. Mr. Satinoi?
Present.
Mrs. Shep?
Present.
I went out of order.
Out of order.
Out of order.
Ms. Shemf?
Present.
And Mr. Walker is not here. We have seven board members present. We have a quorum.
Okay, fantastic. Moving on to item number three, executive session. The Denellen Board of Education will now adjourn into executive session to discuss items that fall within the specific exceptions to the Open Public Meetings Act, see NJSA 10-4-12B. The confidential matters discussed by the board during this executive session include items related to individual privacy, collective bargaining agreements, pending or anticipated litigation, as well as personnel. Any discussion that does not need to remain confidential will be made public as soon as it is practical. Minutes of the executive session will not be disclosed until the need for confidentiality no longer exists. That one? We also will add item tactics or techniques utilized in protecting public safety and property to our discussion, executive session discussion. As I was saying, any discussion that does not need to remain confidential will be made public as soon as it is practical. Minutes of the executive session will not be disclosed until the need for confidentiality no longer exists. All individuals who may be discussed in the executive session have been adequately notified. Action will take place after the conclusion of the executive session. At this time, I'm looking for a motion to move into executive session.
Move to go to exec.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we'll be back in about 25 minutes or so.
Okay, we are back. Thank you for your patience. So at this time, looking for a motion to come back into public.
Move to go back to public.
Second.
All those in favor. I opposed. Okay, moving on to item number four, pledge of allegiance. Flags over here.
Please stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Will you all please remain standing for a moment of reflection and respect for our troops serving throughout the world, our troops who have served, and our troops who have made the ultimate sacrifice in the name of our United States of America? Thank you.
Okay, moving on to item number five, approval of minutes. Looking for a motion to approve the minutes from our last Board of Education meeting, which was on January twenty eighth, twenty twenty five?
I move to approve the board minutes from January twenty eighth, twenty twenty five.
Seconded.
Okay, open for questions or comments. Okay, Mr. Pepe, please call the roll.
Mr. Anderson? Mrs. Condit?
Yes.
Ms. Iback?
Yes.
Dr. Gendrano?
Yes.
Mr. Sotinoi?
Yes.
Ms. Shimpf?
Yes.
Mrs. Shep?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Fantastic. All right, moving on to item number six on the agenda, student recognition. I'll turn it over to Mr. Ross.
Wonderful. Thank you, Dr. Gendrano. Good evening, parents, and good evening, students. It's wonderful to see you all here. So many familiar faces, which is great, and so many of you who are here joining your siblings who have also received Student of the Month recognitions. This is a wonderful celebration of students who have really positively impacted our schools throughout the last month. We're very excited to have some of our administrators and representatives from our schools who will present. So what we're gonna do is, we're gonna go school by school. We're gonna start with Faber. Students, as your name is called, come up to the front. You're gonna receive your certificate, and then we're gonna ask you to stand at the front and wait. And then when all the students from the school are called and you're all standing in line, we'll take a brief pause. Parents, you can get up, you can take nice pictures, and we'll make sure that there's no rush so that everyone gets a good, a good photo up. All right? So we're gonna start with Faber Elementary, and we're gonna start with Ms. Melissa Van Ross. Please come on up.
Okay, thank you. I'm so happy to be here for Mr. Tennant. I'm supervisor of early childhood, so, just so you know who I am. But I've worked here for many years, so it's so great to see familiar faces. I'm delighted to be here to present the Student of the Month awards. It is a remarkable honor that when teachers were asked to select a student for this month, your name stood out among all the students in your grade. I want to extend my heartfelt congratulations to you for being a shining example for your peers. Your hard work, dedication, and strong character have made you a positive role model that others admire and respect. I would also like to commend your families. Remember, our first teachers are our families, so keep up the work. Good work, moms and dads, siblings, grandparents. I encourage you to find a special way to celebrate this achievement tonight or sometime this week. So I'll start. And I think I'll start with the oldest in favor, so that they can stand here the longest, because you're very capable of that. Fifth grade, so I would like to congratulate Eliana Lance. Come on up. So Eliana works extremely hard in class and is never afraid to ask for help, which is a great quality. Her grades are always good, and she participates in many different activities such as student council, STEM club, and safety patrol. She's very helpful to all her teachers and classmates as well. Eliana comes to school with a positive attitude and great energy each day. This is her first year at Faber, and she has adjusted well and has made great connections with students and teachers already. Congratulations. All right, our fourth grader is Jacqueline Guardado. Is he here? So Jacqueline works hard, always does her best, and is kind to others. She's helpful to her classmates and makes the classroom a happy place. We are proud of the positive attitude and great effort, so we'll make sure we give this award to her. For third grade, Natalie Huazo. So Natalie is kind and respectful to her classmates and teachers. She always tries her best and puts effort into everything she does. Natalie is a positive role model at Faber School. Our second grader is Melissa Gonzalez Salgado. It's the girls' night, all right? Natalie is a kind and respectful student to her classmates. She tries her best and puts effort... Oh, Melissa! Melissa! I should know, that's my name too. Melissa is a hardworking and compassionate student. She's grown more confident in her own abilities and now regularly volunteers in class. She has taken a new student under her wing, not only helping navigate a new classroom in school, but a new language and culture as well. Congratulations, Melissa. Okay, our first grade student is Jayanna Thomas. Come on up. All right. Jayanna comes into school every day following all of our classroom rules and expectations. She's always on task and is consistently kind and respectful to all of her teachers and classmates. She's very nice and includes others. She's compassionate and checks in with her friends, and she's energetic and makes everyone laugh. She's a fantastic example to all and truly deserves to be Student of the Month. Congrats. Okay, our kindergarten student, Christopher Martinez. Representing the boys, good work. So Christopher is kind and welcoming. He has a great attitude towards new students, especially one that recently joined the class. He has been very inclusive, going out of his way to help make sure she feels part of the class. Additionally, he has excelled in his learning, actively participating in class, and being an attentive listener during class activities. Congrats, Chris. And our preschooler, Brody Martin. Okay, well, Brody has been doing wonderful in class. He's using his words to request and share his thoughts and feelings. Brody is a positive role model for all the preschoolers at Faber School. Wonderful job, Brody. We'll make sure we get you your certificate. We also have a special area student that the special area teacher has nominated, Milan Wazaluski. All right. Milan is a Renaissance student. He's a great athlete, has even run, and had amazing times in the Girls on the Run 5K. A talented musician, he has creative ideas, he is a pleasure to have in class, he's always willing to help others and try his best. He strives to be the best student he can be, and it shows in every special way. He has a joy for life and shares it with students and staff. We're honored to have Milan as our Student of the Month. Congrats. So congrats to you all. A wonderful achievement.
Thank you, Ms. Van Ross. Congratulations, Faber students. For Lincoln Middle School, we have one of our amazing ENL teachers, Ms. Abby Franklin.
Thank you, Mr. Ross. Thank you, board. Welcome, students, welcome, parents. I'm very honored to be here, standing in this evening as the representative from Lincoln Middle Schools to honor our incredible students. First up, for sixth grade, we have Isabella Jimenez Rosero. The sixth grade teachers are proud to recognize Isabella Jimenez Rosero as the February Student of the Month. Isabella works tirelessly to consistently maintain high honor roll status. Throughout her days, she demonstrates a positive attitude and is always ready and willing to help classmates. Isabella is a strong, critical thinker and makes thoughtful contributions to classroom discussions. She serves as a role model for other students and has an incredibly strong start to her career here at LMS. Congratulations, Isabella. For seventh grade, Gabriela Cardena Suarez. The seventh grade teachers congratulate Gabriela Cardena Suarez for being recognized as our Student of the Month. Gabriela should be commended for putting forth her best effort in her classes. She comes prepared to class every day with a smile and is ready to learn. She works well with others and is always looking to help them out. Her positive outlook and attitude in the classroom set a positive example for her peers. Gabriela is currently attending the Arts High Program of Middlesex County for Modern Dance. She attends the program one afternoon a week. Gabby is a role model and leader at LMS, and we are very proud of her. Congratulations, Gabriela. And our eighth grader, Naomi Soto. Naomi Soto is this month's eighth grade Student of the Month. Naomi is excelling in every aspect of her education after returning to the LMS community earlier this school year. Naomi demonstrates responsibility, consistently participates in class discussions, and shows a genuine enthusiasm for learning. Naomi's hard work and dedication were evident when she earned high honor roll for the second marking period, achieving all As in her classes. Her respect for others and her commitment to creating a positive classroom environment makes her a true role model. Naomi actively seeks out academic opportunities and is always striving to do her best. We are excited to see all that she will accomplish this year. Congratulations, Naomi. On behalf of Lincoln Middle School, congratulations to the students in the Donellen School District being recognized for their outstanding accomplishments so far this school year.
All right, thank you, Ms. Franklin. Congratulations, Lincoln Middle School students. Last but certainly not least, we have Mr. Tobin from Donellen High School.
Good evening. Nice to see everyone tonight. Thank you for coming out, and congratulations to all those who are being recognized. We are celebrating our four February Students of the Month in ninth, tenth, and eleventh, and twelfth grade today, starting with grade nine, Isaiah Jackson. I don't think he's here. Isaiah's had a great start to his freshman year. He's been on the honor roll for the second marking period in a row, which means he's been getting all As and Bs in his classes. Teachers have had mentioned that he expresses his ideas well in his writing, and he's also taking a rigorous academic schedule. He's in four honors classes, so he's doing well with some very tough classes, and a wonderful young man in the ninth grade, so congratulations to Isaiah. Our sophomore Student of the Month is Melanie Jimenez Araviaga. Melanie joined us this October after completing her freshman year in another district. She's been a wonderful addition to the hallways and family of Donellen High School. She achieved honor roll for the second marking period, which is all As and Bs. And she's been noted to be cooperative, attentive in her classes. She did well on her midterm exams, which is also a great accomplishment after starting in October and being in another school in September, so... Well-deserved accomplishment from Melanie. Our junior Student of the Month is Abigail Barati. Abigail achieved honor roll in both the first and second marking periods. She's taking AP Language and Composition and Physics, among other rigorous classes. She is a member of the National Art Honor Society, has been noted to do quality work in her industrial arts or woodshop class. And she is going to be attending a summer boot camp this summer up at West Point. And she might possibly be one of our best athletes under the radar, because she is... Recently just went into a U-18 USA Rugby tryout for the USA Under-18 Rugby Team. So, yeah, a lot, a lot to Abigail, and a well-deserved recognition of her accomplishments for February. Our senior Student of the Month is Antonio Soto. I don't believe he's here. Antonio's had one of the bests... He had the second-best marking period two GPA of all seniors this past marking period. He had the second-best marking period-two GPA of all seniors this past marking period. So, a great accomplishment for him. He's taking three AP classes, so a very rigorous schedule and what some might call, you know, senior year as a year to kind of take a lot of electives. So, he's really pushing himself hard and achieving at the same time. He's a member of the National Honor Society and the History Club, and he achieved high honor roll in both the first and second marking periods, which means he's achieved all As in all of his classes. So, also well-deserved for Antonio to be February Student of the Month for 12th grade.
Thank you, Mr. Tobin. Congratulations, parents. Congratulations, students. It's an amazing accomplishment. We're all very proud of you. It's wonderful to see you here tonight. Thank you to some of our staff members who are here celebrating their students and our staff members who presented. We are going to take about a five-minute break, so I know that it's going to be a late night, and we all have school tomorrow. So, we'll take a five-minute break and let you all depart. You're certainly welcome to stay if you'd like. We've got about a two-hour meeting ahead of us, but certainly no obligation. Have a good night, everyone. Thank you. Congratulations.
And do you have presentations? Okay. Do you mind if I change the format? Because right now, we have it set up on our live stream as well, so this video is being broadcast. So, okay. All right. Perfect.
And everything, and then when they become a senior, they can model for the juniors, so. Good. Yeah, it's very, very nice. Yes.
Hear each other.
Yeah, no, it's very nice.
So, we're all online. We're all, everybody can see this.
And I'll use the mic just because, I mean, I'll use the mic anyway for your at-home people, but my voice has really been just ridiculous. I had, I had my own chat with this in 2023, right before workshop. What do they tell you when you have laryngitis? Don't talk. What do I do for a living? I talk. So, I had to, I felt like I had to go to workshop. I had like five or six presentations that I had to give. And so, now my vocal cords are damaged.
Oh, no.
Hi, how are you? It's good to see you, too. I saw you walking in. I was on the phone with my daughter because I wasn't sure if I was in the right spot. And I know I had been here before. And I said, oh, I see you're super. And she, my daughter works in North Brunswick, and one of her best friends is in Donellen. So, I think, could you do me a, I don't know Kim's last name yet. But I said, could you do me a favor and call Kim and ask her if this is where I'm supposed to be? So, we were talking.
Really, Kim? As a teacher?
No, 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 no. She's a teacher in North Brunswick, but she lives in, in Donellen.
Oh, she lives in there.
Yeah. I just don't know her last name. She's, Kaylee's, one of Kaylee's good friends from North Brunswick, so.
Cool.
Yeah. Me, too. Thanks.
So, we're going to do student presentation. Let's do rep first. Well, actually, Noel. Noel and then students.
Okay. Whenever you're ready for me, you give me the high sign and I'm letting them ready.
You'll see, we're going to move and like move around so that we can.
Yeah, I'm going to just turn it off.
Okay, we are back. So, moving on to item number six on the agendas. Sorry, item number seven on the agenda, President's Remarks. So, welcome, everyone, to our board meeting. So, first of all, I wanted to just take a moment to congratulate again all the students who were recognized this evening. We're so proud of your accomplishments and keep up the great work. I did want to mention, since we spoke last, there was an honor roll assembly. Donellen High School brought back the honor roll assembly on 11th of February, recognizing students, grades nine through 12, on the honor roll and high honor roll. The auditorium was packed with students and families celebrating the great accomplishments of our kids. So, congrats to the honorees. I did want to mention also, since we spoke last, there was a PTO Talent Show, and I got to tell you, it was a rousing success. So, check this out. All seats were sold out. Approximately 30 folks had to actually be turned away because of the seating capacity issues. The event raised, ready for this, $2,131, which surpasses last year's event, and that is fantastic. Wow. And we'd just like to say thank you to the PTO, you know, Dr. Gendrano, Stark Gendrano, Mrs. Moore, our talent show co-chairs, the whole PTO membership, Mr. Sutera, Ms. Piano, Mr. Geiger, Mr. Petsinger, our custodial staff, student volunteers, especially Brian Villacres, who was our Student of the Month last month for 11th grade, and all the AV, lights, and stage crew folks, the supportive parents and the engaged audience, and of course, our Donellen students who shared their awesome talents with us to make the event such a great success. So, thank you. As I reiterate from meeting to meeting, as you know, staying healthy with the drop in the temperatures, it's important to underscore that healthy kids means healthy schools means healthy community. And the bottom line here is, we encourage you to take the common sense precautions to minimize the spread of infectious disease that can really impact our school year. So, you know, this way we can keep our school going and our community healthy. As I also do every month, our monthly celebrations. So, February, Black History Month, Lunar New Year. National Freedom Day was February 1st, which commemorates the signing of the 13th Amendment, which abolished slavery in 1865. This was all, and February is also School Board Recognition Month, which was announced via proclamation by Governor Murphy back in December of 2022. I mention this to underscore the importance of diversity, equity, inclusion, and most importantly, belonging in the fabric of our daily lives and the impact that that has in our community. Open, honest, and equitable communication that is respectful, positive, supportive, fair, and most of all, kind goes a long way in strengthening the community. So, just to reflect, we are, you know, a little time check here. I know maybe this is a little premature. We're about four months out until our Donellen Seniors Walk, 2025 graduation stage. And there are great many things that are going to be happening in our district and our community between now and then, and I would greatly encourage you to be an active part of it. Thank you, everyone, for your time and listening. Moving on to the superintendent's report with Mr. Ross. Mr. Ross?
Thank you, Dr. Gendrano. So, we will, as always, start the superintendent's report off with the student representatives' report, so I will turn it over to Douglas and Chisara.
Good evening. We have the school's report for February. So, this report is a report of the sports activities, environment of the school, students' thoughts, and overall experience at DHS Lincoln Middle and Faber Elementary School. So, here are some current events. On January 30th, the Safety Ambassadors held their first presentation at Faber Elementary School. The high school students educated the kids on the topics of wheel safety, pedestrian safety, falls prevention, healthy eating, and safety in and around cars. On February 8th, the peer leaders lectured the freshmen about diversity and the importance of inclusion. Students discussed the topics such as stereotypes, personal bias, and inclusivity. There are currently only two weeks until the DHS Drama Club's production of The Addams Family. The show will run from March 6th through the 8th. As stated earlier, on February 11th, the first honor roll assembly for this school year was held. Almost 150 students earned this award for the second quarter. The college acceptance bulletin board is up now at DHS. Displayed are the names of students and the colleges they have been accepted to. Ms. Marker and the counseling office have been adding names in the schools to be displayed in the bulletin board in the hallway outside of the counseling office. During the entire month of February, the Black Student Union has provided quotes from influential Black leaders over the morning announcements to celebrate Black History Month. Transitioning into the sports, winter sports season has come to a close. Our boys' basketball team has had an amazing season. The varsity boys' basketball team currently holds a record of 15 and 9. The team is 12 and 2 in the Silver Division. They've been named the Greater Middlesex Conference Silver Division Champions. On February 4th, senior Ryan Hutchins joined the 1,000-point scorers' club in a face-off between Donellen and Middlesex. Due to their success this season, the team has earned the 12th seed in the upcoming GMC Tournament. The boys will play Highland Park tomorrow at home at 6:00 PM for the NJ SIAA Tournament, first round of Central Jersey Group One. As for girls' basketball, our varsity girls' basketball team currently holds a record of 6 and 17, with a record of 3 and 11 in the Blue Division. The girls are playing their final game today as they face Piscataway Votech. Going into the game, the team is coming off of a win against Somerset Votech with a score of 55 to 26. The spring sports season is approaching. Any student interested in participating in baseball, softball, or boys' tennis have been given the opportunity to attend an interest meeting in regards to the spring preseason.
Okay. Good evening, everybody. It is a pleasure to be here again and to have the opportunity to serve the information about the state of the schools from Donellen High School, Lincoln Middle School, and Faber Elementary. This report's information comes directly from the students' points of view and also includes general information about the events happening. I was able for this report to be, to add the information directly from the student councils of each school, so I spoke to the administration at Faber and Lincoln, and they worked with the student council of each school to gather the information. Hello? To gather the information about the schools' activities and the feeling of the students. So, from Faber, on February 18th and our fourth and fifth grade. One second, sorry. Our fourth and fifth grade Black History SA Contest winners were honored at the council meeting. Our fourth grade winner was Ashnika Suji-Karan, sorry. And our fifth grade winner was Thomas Trent, both ELA students from Mrs. De Sosa. A new club at Faber recently started, the Kindness Club. Students can already sign up. On February 10th, we celebrated 100 days of school. The first grade students already had their field trip to the Jackinson's Aquarium. Faber had a Black History Assembly. Students in third, fourth, and fifth grade learn about Jod and involvement in the American Civil Rights Movement through dance. The program involves racism and the struggle for freedom as students hear the words from Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. and learn how nonviolent direct action helps end segregation. learned how nonviolent direct action helped and, and segregation. Students in grades PK, K, first, and second grade learn about the principles of hip hop, peace, love, unity, and having fun. They learn about inspiring positive change in young people through an exploration of the roots of hip hop culture. We began our Rutgers hydrophonic workshop with students in fourth and fifth grade. The students had the opportunity to learn firsthand about hydrophonics using in the classroom and projects-based learning. They kick off the kids' heart challenge. They can register through the Favor newsletter. For Lincoln Middle School, they had the candy grounds. Valentine's Day brought some exciting activities to Lincoln Middle School. The highly anticipated candy grounds were a bit, a big hit, as students had the chance to purchase them to, for one dollar to each, one dollar each to send to their friends. On Valentine's Day, these sweet messages and treats were distributed to the lucky recipients, spreading joy and appreciation throughout the school. Another highlight was the Valentine's Day door decorating, an initiative started by a group of girls who took on the challenge of decorating nearly all the eighth grade doors. Their creative and festive designs added a special touch to the hallways, making the school feel even more lively and full of love. To top it all off, LMS hosted an epic battle of the classes, where the seeds, seven, eight graders faced off in a series of competitive games, including red light, green light, tug of war, and more. Each grade brought their best energy and teamwork, making it a thrilling event for everyone involved. The eighth graders were the winners. But both the boys and the girls' basketball teams were up top an incredible season showing of their hard work, teamwork, and dedication on the court. Their efficient throughout, their effort throughout the season led to some amazing games, and their determination made the LMS community proud. Congratulated, congratulations to all the players and coaches for an unforgettable season. On February nineteenth, LMS held its honor roll ceremony to recognize the students from all grades for their academic achievements. Parents were invited to attend in person, and for those who couldn't make it, the ceremony was a streamlight, allowing families to celebrate their student's success from anywhere. Okay, so from Dunellen High School, today David Flood gave an interactive speech to the whole high school. Students really enjoyed the topics discussed, like empathy, inclusion, and the importance difference between awareness and acceptance. He seemed really passionate about his speech, as he also shares personal experience and thoughts. In his speech, he encourages students to look at the inside rather than the outside of individuals. Personally, it was great meeting him and having him share with us. Dunellen Performing Arts, as priorly mentioned, is presenting The Addams Family. As the students and the staff are putting a lot of effort into this show in order for it to be great. I have no doubt that this show will be a huge success, as everything is looking great already. The Girls Who Code Club is an expanding club that previously began with small men, meetings between advisors. Our goal with the Girls Who Code Club is to expand interested, interested, interest, and provide opportunities for girls interested in STEM careers. The club is also looking to diversify the STEM field and is now accepting more members here at DHS. The club has now fifty members that are eager to learn and exciting about entering a coding competition that promotes driver safety. This club also rests, it is also receiving funding from the Brain Injury Alliance of New Jersey, sponsored by, by the New Year, New Jersey Manufacturer Insurance Group. As the club expands, one of their goals is to open up membership to middle school and middle school gears as well. Dunellen High School held the, their honor roll assembly on February eleventh. This one had, this was an exciting moment to celebrate the success of peers as they perform highly academically. Freshman class is holding an apparel sale to gather funds for their class. They are selling slip-up sweaters, hoodies, and sweatpants. I think this is a great way of fundraising while giving people the opportunity to purchase school branded clothing. This is your main report. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you both so much. This was a really great report. Let's give them a beautiful round of applause. Nice work. And also, we have, with winter sports, we have the, the winter sports banquet, right, is the thirteenth, right, March thirteenth, Thursday, the thirteenth. So, excellent work, both of you. Really appreciate it. Tons of information, really great stuff. So, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
So, we have some presentations. Before we get to the, um, school board's, uh, presentation slash training, I'm gonna invite Liz Lopez up from Dunellen Public Library. Um, one of the things that we have really worked on with the school district is connecting the district to the borough and, um, borough organizations. And obviously, we've had a very close relationship with the library in terms of ENL programming and, um, parent classes and public events and things like that. And so, um, we thought it would be great to have Liz here and just give kind of a little update on, um, new things happening on the library, uh, front. And, you know, we'll share information out with parents as well. Um, but without any further ado, Liz, why don't you use the microphone, please? Come on up. The floor is yours.
Hello. All right. Thank you very much. Um, and thank you to everybody who's viewing online. Uh, February's Library Lovers Month, and so I asked Superintendent Ross to have me, to invite me to come to speak to everybody, to tell you a little bit about what we do at the library. Because if I had a dollar for every time I tell somebody about our library services and they say, I didn't know you did that, we might not have any gaps in our budget. But, um, we really wanna get out and perform some outreach and spread the word and encourage everybody to sign up for our, for your, a library card. So, just a little bit about our library. Our library is located at one hundred New Market Road in the center of town. Um, our library was donated to us by the Art Color Factory when they closed the factory back in the seventies. And we are currently supported through tax dollars. About one percent of your taxes goes towards the library's budget. And we still receive a grant from the Art Color Foundation for the acquisition of books and circulated materials. Uh, so who's eligible for a library card? Everybody is eligible for a free library card. If you are a resident of Dunellen, if you are a student in Dunellen Schools, or if you are an employee of a business in Dunellen, you are eligible for a free library card. And with your free library card, of course, we have books. There you go. Good job. We have books. Everybody thinks library, you think books. Um, and we have so much more in twenty twenty-five. We have, obviously, books, magazines, newspapers, DVDs, audiobooks, and musics on CD. We have digital downloads, so you don't have to renew your audible subscriptions. You could just sign up for a library card and use eLibrary New Jersey. We have a library of things, which includes iPads, Chromebooks, and Wi-Fi hotspots. We have home delivery of books, and we have newly added Museum Pass program, which includes free access to six museums in the New York and New Jersey region and the Turtleback Zoo. So, we are the first library in New Jersey to have this partnership with the Turtleback Zoo. The program is sponsored by the Friends of the Dunellen Public Library and a great opportunity to, uh, have some enrichment and have some free activities with your kids. We also offer technology resources through our computer lab. We have free Wi-Fi that is open, and it is accessible on the exterior of the building when the building is closed, which was very helpful, obviously, to a lot of people during the pandemic and even now. Of course, most people have a cellular device with Wi-Fi, but there are many individuals who do not. And we have a computer lab available with staff to support them and guide them through the process. We also have printing services and faxing services. You would be surprised how many people come in on a daily basis, because if you need to fax a document to refinance your mortgage, finalize your retirement, or for medical reasons, we've got the fax machine for you. We also have programs. We've had a wonderful partnership with the school district to expand our ESL program, and we've started a new ESL program for teens and young people. We have storytimes for babies and toddlers, Dungeons and Dragons, arts and craft workshops, cultural heritage celebrations. We currently have a Black History Month display going on with some of our wonderful students who have produced some amazing work. Larry Roybal is a great, phenomenal teacher, uh, and that's a cooperative effort with the Dunellen Arts, Culture, and Inclusion Commission. And we have staff, which is available on hand to answer reference questions, guide you through using technology, signing up for email, um, accounts, using social media, and they really are our most valuable resource. And most of our staff started as volunteers as Dunellen students. We have two current students, Jackson Rios, uh, who attends Votec through the district, and A.J. Romero, who is a senior. Mackenzie Barati from the class of twenty twenty-three does our children's programs. Megan Parish from the class of twenty twenty-two is our outreach coordinator. Fiorella Fonseca from the class of twenty-one is our bilingual baddie. And Pat Lauschner from the class of sixty-two has been with us for twenty years. Our principal library assistant, Nicole Rodriguez, graduated with our own mayor, Jason Solento, with the class of two thousand and seven. An honorable mention would have to go to Viola Mann, who, while she did not graduate from Dunellen Schools, many branches of her family tree did, and one of her grandchildren has joined the faculty in the athletics department. So, I like to think of our library as the center of our community. It's our town's living room. Everybody is welcome. It is open to the public. You don't have a library card, have to have a library card to use the library. It would be a lot cooler if you did. And ways that you could support your library include getting a library card. Everybody in your family is eligible. We have a lot of households that share a card, and while that is allowed, we would prefer that everybody register for their own library card. We registered four hundred and fifty new users last year, and our goal this year is to register one thousand new library card holders. So, we have a QR code on a flyer at the, at the exit. If you're interested, you can sign up for a library card online. You can attend a program. We have lots of great programs, and anybody who knows me knows, if you mention something that might be fun to do, I will most likely respond with, oh, we could do that at the library. Um, and we have, please come by and use our digital printing services. When your kids tell you at six PM that they need you to print something and sign it, and there's no ink in that HP printer on your desk, come on down to the library. We got you covered. So, come check us out. And thank you so much for having us today.
Thank you, Liz, and your girl's got a lot of footage, which will be edited, I'm sure, in the most wonderful and flattering way. Um, the library really has been a great partner, uh, with us. And Liz, if you wanna send me info, we'll distribute it electronically as well. We're also putting together public, uh, events. We're doing, um, a project with Keep Middlesex Moving, which will be sort of like a community fair and also bike rodeo, which will have sort of bike helmets and bike safety programming. And we'll have the library there as well to get people to register for cards. There's also a new partnership with Somerset County Library Services, which is a huge, huge win for Dunellen Public Library. The superintendent in Greenbrook and I, um, worked with Liz and some, a representative who we have, who we have in common, uh, in the Somerset County library system. And there, I guess, had been prior, uh, relationships between the organizations, but this basically was all renewed. So, now Dunellen residents can, uh, use Somerset County Library Services and vice versa. So, if you're a Greenbrook resident and you live right on the other side of, you know, Dunellen, and you're in another county, you can just head down to the library and use those services. And obviously, Somerset County has a lot of services that, you know, a small municipal library wouldn't have. So, there's a lot of access that's been expanded as well for those residents. So, thank you, as always, for your partnership and, and for all of your work on this.
Thank you for bringing that up. I was trying to keep it concise.
Yep, yep. Yeah, concise is not my, my fine point. So, yeah. Um, all right. Without any further ado, we have, um, so the, uh, school board is, uh, during the organization meeting each year, the, um, Dunellen Public School Board, uh, basically signs on as a, uh, member district to the New Jersey School Boards Association. And so, through the partnership with the School Boards Association, there's a lot of information about training for school board members and, uh, informational updates about legislation and things like that. And, uh, also, the board, uh, is assigned a representative. And the representative is sort of the conduit for all questions that board members can have about ethical responsibilities and process questions and the law and, and all of those things. And we're very honored and very pleased, um, that our representative, Mary Ann Friedman, is here with us today. And, um, we're gonna give her the floor, and she's gonna be talking about my evaluation. So.
And I'm not sure how to put this up.
Yep, yeah, we'll, we'll put it on and put it on there. Yeah, and we're gonna get out of the way.
So, while that's all happening, I'm Mary Ann Friedman. I know some of you, um, remember some of you, Jason, um, from before, and some of you folks from before. So, it's good to see you again. And I'm very happy to be back in Middlesex County. I was with Middlesex from two thousand seventeen to twenty-two. I got pulled into, I do this all, this is why I dislike microphones, 'cause I knock them over all the time. Um, I was pulled into Monmouth County and Ocean County in twenty twenty-two, and so I wasn't able to represent Middlesex anymore. And now I'm back in Middlesex, and I'm thrilled to be here. So, very happy to see you all tonight. So, I'm gonna talk to you a little bit about the Chief School Administrator evaluation, the CSA evaluation, as we call it, which is this, we use CSA, Chief School Administrator and Superintendent as, as one. And then the board self-evaluation process. We have a brand-new board self-evaluation that I'm excited to tell you about, and we'll go through this as easily as we can. There's a lot of stuff that you've already heard before about these things. And if anybody just went to new board member orientation, I saw your name on the list. Congratulations and welcome. Um, and anybody else who just joined the board this, this January, um, welcome to boardsmanship. And I hope that you'll find the information in the packet. This is all on your right side, the PDF of this PowerPoint, and then there's helpful information on the left side, along with my business card. Please don't hesitate to call me or send me an email if you have any questions about governance, ethics, any of the things that, um, Mr. Ross talked about. So, we're gonna talk tonight about the legal guidelines, the evaluation process itself, and the evaluation tools that we have. And just as a reminder, anybody who has a family member or real, immediate family member or relative who's working in the district would not, would be conflicted and would not be able to take part in the evaluation process. And I'm going to count on either, uh, Mr. Pepe, to let me know who those folks are, so that I can put them in our system as conflicted for this year. And I'll explain that as we go through in a little bit. So, this is how you hold your superintendent accountable to you. You have one employee as a board, and that's your superintendent. So, this really is your means of oversight and appraisal of the effective management of the school district. And that's what you're looking for. So, if you started in January, you're going to use your knowledge from January, having been sworn in, until you do the superintendent's evaluation to evaluate the superintendent. If you've been here since July first of last year, this goes from July first until June thirtieth. Okay? So, the legal guidelines, NJSA is New Jersey statutes annotated, and eighteen A is what takes care of education. And that stipulates that the board shall evaluate the performance of the superintendent at least once a year. That evaluation shall be in writing. The board and the superintendent will meet to discuss those findings, and the evaluation will be based on goals and objectives and the responsibilities of the superintendent by criteria and by job description and other criteria prescribed by the State Board of Education. NJAC is New Jersey Administrative Code, and six A is what relates to education, again. And that stipulates that the annual performance report shall be prepared by July first. And you will lose CUSAC, you'll gain CUSAC points if you do it by July first. If you don't do it by July first, you'll lose CUSAC points. And I'll go over that in a minute. But it also is going to let you know that you need to identify areas of strength, any areas that might need improvement, any recommendations for professional growth, and indicators of student progress and growth. And that summary conference needs to be held by the non-conflicted members of the board in executive session, having rice the superintendent, giving the superintendent a rice notice, which just means that you have let him know that you are going to be evaluating and discussing his performance during that executive, um, executive session. Okay? And a rice notice is what you give to any staff when you might be discussing them in executive session. And so, the CUSAC requirements are that you have a policy and a contract with the superintendent to annually evaluate him or her based on the adoption of goals and performance measures, and that the highest priority is given to student achievement. You have subgroup achievement, and also, each new member has received their training on the CSA evaluation. New members receive their training. New members receive their training on the superintendent's evaluation at new board member orientation, at either the weekend program or at Governance 1. There is a, there's going to be a March Saturday date that I don't have off the top of my head. I apologize. That if you haven't gone to new board member orientation yet and were just sworn in in January, you'll need to do that. Or a self-paced program. The self-paced program is online. But the other opportunity to do a one-day program is March. And I think it's the 8th. I think it might be the 8th. And you can ask Mr. Pepe to register you for that if you haven't registered. The most important thing about new board members is that you have to go through new board member orientation or Governance 1 within 90 days of being sworn in, okay? And then you want to complete the superintendent's evaluation by July 1st. So you get seven points for the policy and the contract, performance measures that reflect the highest priorities given to student achievement. And then you get six points for completing the annual superintendent's evaluation by July 1st, okay? These are things, the superintendent's evaluation is something that is absolutely within the board's control, okay? It's not just the board president's responsibility to remember to do this. It's every board member's responsibility to be able to say, if you get into April and you haven't been talking about this yet or you haven't asked the superintendent to go in and start it off, and I'll explain that in a few minutes, then it's everybody's responsibility to bring that up. Where are we in terms of the superintendent's evaluation? Because you really want to get it done by July 1st. So is the use of the evaluation a requirement by NJSBA? No, it's not. There are evaluation tools. We think we have a pretty wonderful evaluation tool. It was developed in collaboration with New Jersey Association of School Administrators, which is basically the superintendent's association. It provides a standardized methodology for you to be able to meet the statutory requirements. It allows for full participation of all non-conflicted board members. And it is an optional service. So you don't have to use our evaluation tool. But if you don't use our evaluation tool, please make sure, because it's in statute and code, you have to have an area that evaluates the superintendent on progress towards district goals every year, okay? So how to make the process seamless? You first want to know, is the district census up to date? And I did look at the district census. Your board president and vice president are clearly noted in that. You don't have any sending members from other school districts? And all of your board members have accurate email addresses? You're all using a district email account, right?
Correct.
Okay, perfect. And that, you will get sent that information as soon as Mr. Ross goes in and completes his portion. Within 48 hours, you'll all get an email that says, your superintendent, Mr. Daniel Ross, has completed his superintendent's evaluation, his portion, and it invites you to go in and do yours. It gives you the link. It tells you what email address you're going to be using. And it sends you, it sends that email to your district email account, okay? Have we identified all members who can participate? So the red arrow there is if the president is conflicted, the president can ask for an alternate member to be assigned. And that would be done by Mr. Pepe also, okay? And then that person would take care of talking with me, seeing where we are in the process, getting any kind of updates and things like that. And then has the board developed a superintendent evaluation calendar? It's the very first thing on the left side of your packet. And I can promise you, as I have with boards that I've worked with over the past 15 years, if you fill out that evaluation process calendar, it gives you our timeframes, so you can get it all done by July 1st. And then it gives you a column to put in your own dates. If you do that shortly after reorganization and then keep that as part of your packet and as part of your board packet, you'll never be late in completing the superintendent's evaluation. It'll always be done because everybody's looking at it. Everybody's aware of it, okay? So the business administrator, as I said, must enter the board president, as the board president, into our platform and census. That has already been done. Making sure the census is correct, this is something that the business administrator does. And this is going to be in the handout that I've given you. So the, all of the links are there for Mr. Pepe. But I don't think that he needs this because I think he's done this before. And as I said, I did check the, our census information. And everything seems to be in good place. So this is a sample of the evaluation calendar. You have part of this on the left-hand side. So typically, the board and the superintendent will establish annual district goals and then board goals somewhere over the summer, anytime between June and September. And then the superintendent will develop action plans for those. So the district goals are basically the what the board wants to see happen in the district in the upcoming year. And then the action plans talk to you about how the superintendent's going to get you there, okay? And there's going to be different timeframes, who's responsible and things like that. And then the board and the superintendent should develop a process for providing updates on the progress towards the district goals. We recommend four times a year, usually November, January. November is good because it's generally your first one after you've developed those goals. And then January, because as you have new board members come in, it's a good time to let them know what those district goals are and how you're doing towards those. Then March or early April, because that's when you want the superintendent to be going in and dropping in those district goals and his own ratings as to how he feels he's doing to start off that evaluation process. And then June to wrap the year up, okay? So typically, the superintendent will complete their portion sometime in March or April. And then board members can go in as soon as they get that email letting them know. And then when everybody who is not conflicted has completed it, I will be sending Mr. Dr. Galen Gendrano, sorry, butchering your name. Haven't seen you in a while.
It's okay, I've heard worse.
And I will be communicating with him. And then you'll let me know when you want me to compile the evaluation. I'll compile it and I'll send it to you in a secure and password-protected email. Or I can allow you access and you can go in and get it through our system, which is a secure and confidential system that we have. Then what happens is that's not the end of it. So just getting the compilation, a lot of times people think, oh, we got the compilation. Now we're done. The compilation is then for the board, the non-conflicted members of the board, having rice the superintendent to meet and discuss that compilation and identify what the majority opinion of the board is in that compilation, okay? That gets written then into a summative evaluation document that I provide you with. And then in your next executive session, you would be able to, we suggest that once that summative evaluation has been done, that be given, provided to the superintendent about 24 to 48 hours before you meet again. This time, it will be non-conflicted members with the superintendent. And that's the executive summary conference for the superintendent's evaluation. And that's what needs to be completed by July 1st, okay? So the process really starts with district goal settings and action plans. Then the goals and the progress reports and updates are done. You can have a pre-evaluation conference sometime in March, which would again be one of those updates on how the district goals, how the superintendent is doing towards the completion of the district goals. The superintendent completes the district goals at a self-assessment and the executive evidence of six leadership standards. So he'll be able to provide you with a hyperlink in each of the goal areas that he wants you to see evidence that supports what he gave himself a rating for. And then in the leadership standards, the superintendent doesn't get to do a self-evaluation, but they can provide you with those hyperlinks again that will give you evidence of how he feels he has done towards those specific standards, okay? Then superintendent completes the, the board then completes the individual superintendent evaluations. The board, non-conflicted members meet to discuss that compilation and identify the majority opinion. Then you have your annual summary conference at the next executive session, having rice the superintendent for both of those executive sessions. And then the board president and the superintendent sign and date the annual performance report. That should be done by July 1st, okay? Any questions so far? Okay. So the pre-conference, which would be held in March, is really pretty much just a progress on the district goals and talking about that. Talking about student progress and then also any questions or concerns that the board might have. And then the goals assessment is really going to be part of 18A, which says that the evaluation shall be based on goals and objectives of the district. And those are generally three to five critical focus areas that you all feel with the superintendent need to be focused on in the upcoming year. So that's why you generally will do those over the summer, because you'll know exactly what has been accomplished in the previous year's evaluation. And if there's anything you need to carry over, which there might be, or things that need to be further expanded on, okay? Then that really is an annual collaborative process between the superintendent and the board. Some goals may be multi-year. And when you're evaluating, remember, you're always evaluating on the progress towards the achievement of the district goals because the superintendent has until June 30th of each year to complete those. And then the superintendent's going to provide you with those action plans that will really show you how he's going to get you from point A, where you are in June or July or August, to June of the following year, okay? And you should be receiving and identifying areas, timeframe is when you'd like to receive those updates. So on our landing page, you would go about halfway down and see in Quick Resources, the CSA and Board Self-Evaluation. Click on that, and that will take you directly to both of the evaluation pieces that you can start on. The goals assessment looks just like this. The superintendent will drop in the description of the goal, whether he feels he's achieved satisfactory progress was made or little or no progress was made, and then put in comments. Then whether you're the first person who goes in to do the evaluation or the last person who goes in, you will only see what the superintendent has entered, okay? You won't see anybody else's ratings or comments until you get that compilation. So then you'll be able to go in, again, non-conflicted members only. You'll be able to go in, you'll see whether the superintendent felt that they achieved satisfactory progress or little or no progress was made. And you can either agree with that or mark your own rating, achieve satisfactory progress or little or none, and then put in comments that reflect why you made those, that rating, okay? A lot of times, I'm delivering the superintendent's evaluation and somebody will call me and say, why did somebody say this? We don't know that. I'm not a mind reader. I don't think anybody here is. So if you can put in, in a very constructive way, why you're giving that rating, it will help the superintendent understand where he is with those particular areas, okay? And think about it this way. If you're working outside the home and you're not working for yourself, you probably have an evaluation done every year. And you really do need to know that so that you know from your employer's perspective whether you're doing a good job or whether they want to see you improve on any areas. So that's really what this is about. And it really does help to give you a communication avenue also to be able to talk about these things. So a sample of a compilation for a goal. The goal might have been improved safety and security of students and staff. The superintendent put in that they achieved the goal. And their comments were, the superintendent reports out monthly at board meetings on the progress made toward the district goals. Attached is the yearly action plan for those goals. And additional evidence can be found at the attached standard links too. And then board members are able to put in their comments, okay? And you can see from the ratings there, the superintendent felt that he had achieved this goal, he or she, and seven members agreed with that. One person felt satisfactory progress was made and one person felt little or no progress was made. So the majority opinion in that particular area would be the seven who felt that the superintendent had achieved the goal, okay? And then you can pick out comments when you're having that first executive session. You can look through that. And I always suggest that whoever's going to be typing it up, bring in a highlighter and highlight the areas, the comments that board members said. That really reflects what we're trying to say here, okay? Because if you do what I did my first year doing that, you think you're going to get home and remember, and you don't, okay? So learn from my mistake. I was calling board members the next day and saying, what did we say about this? So highlighters are great. The professional standards have been put together by the ISLOC standards, which is the Interstate School Leaders License or Consortium. And they were updated in 2015, which led to our updating the superintendent's evaluation in 2016, '17. And it does reflect the qualities and the values of leadership that work, leadership work that's integral really to student success. And it also helps you identify as a board areas of strength and areas where more focus should be. So those standards are mission, vision, core values, governance, ethics, and professional norms, operations management, curriculum instruction assessment and school improvement, community of care, equity and family engagement, and professional capacity, community of school district personnel. So remember, in the standards, the superintendent can't give themselves a rating, but they can give you those hyperlinks that they want you to look at that they feel will attest to how they did in those particular standards. Each of the standard has a separate name and a separate definition. The rating scale is always going to be the same, exemplary, proficient, area for growth, unsatisfactory, or not observed. But the definition for that may be different based on that particular standard, okay? And then the superintendent can also add in those sample resources for those particular standards with those hyperlinks. And for the superintendent's perspective, you need to know that anything that you type in there, when you hit the spacebar, it's going to show you that it's a hyperlink. But if it isn't, it won't take you anywhere. So you want to make sure that when you go in and do that, you try, again, before you submit it, try again from another computer, maybe from home, or if you were at work, do the opposite. And make sure that those hyperlinks actually bring them to someplace, okay? And then there will be indicators there that for each of the standards, there's usually five to seven. There's the rating, exemplary, proficient, area for growth, unsatisfactory, and not observed. The not observed gives, especially new board members, the opportunity to say, I don't really have enough information to evaluate the superintendent on this. It doesn't count for them and it doesn't count against them, okay? It's just, I don't have enough information. And then you'll be able to give an overall assessment of that standard. And in that particular case, it was proficient. And then you can put in your board member comments that support those ratings, okay? And we really do, your board members, your fellow board members will appreciate you putting in comments. And if you don't put in a comment, you won't be able to advance to the next page. So either you need to put in an A or something to that effect. But we really appreciate it. And your board members will appreciate if you put in a comment. So then this is a sample of the compilation of a standard. And you can see that most of the people on that eight-member board, so there was probably one person who was conflicted, marked the superintendent as proficient in those areas, proficient or area for growth. And if it's not clear, if, say, there were four and four, four proficient, four area for growth, you could say in your summary that the board was, you know, was equally split between proficient and area for growth when you're doing that final report. And then you see at the bottom that the overall assessment was five for proficient, which would mean that was the majority of the board members who participated, okay? So the compilation is going to be non-conflicted members' opinions. It's going to be a data source that gives you, allows you to identify what that majority opinion is. Then the majority opinion is going to take care of the annual performance report, the summary report. And that summary report will be what you hold the annual summary conference for. And you'll give it to the superintendent about 24 to 48 hours ahead of time so he can process everything. And the summary conference is really for the superintendent to be able to address the board members and for board members to be able to address the superintendent. Most importantly, it's also the opportunity for anybody who is not in the majority to voice their opinion if they so choose, okay? So again, that summary report is going to be all non-conflicted members. You're going to rice the superintendent. You're going to identify the majority opinion in that one executive session. So that's just the non-conflicted members of the board that meet and exec for that. Then you'll have that annual performance report. Usually, it's written by the board president or a designee. And even if the board president isn't conflicted, it can be a designee. And that's going to reflect the agreed-upon majority opinion. And then that next executive session at your next board meeting, you'll have rice the superintendent again. And you'll have given him the annual summary report 24 to 48 hours ahead of time. Then the superintendent signs and dates one copy. If you're using hard copies, the board president signs and dates one hard copy. The superintendent should keep a hard copy or an electronic copy for themselves. And the board president should keep an electronic or hard copy for the board attorney, okay? The reason we say the board attorney is because if you had, in your confidential files, the superintendent has a file also. But other confidential secretaries or confidential staff may have access to that. The only people that should see the superintendent's evaluation are non-conflicted. The only people that should see the superintendent's evaluation are non-conflicted board members. Employees of the district should not be able to have access to that. So that's why we suggest you give it to your board attorney. Okay? The annual performance template looks something like this. You'll drop in the superintendent's name, the school year, the district, the Board of Education met on what date to discuss and complete, the goals for that particular year, and the superintendent's leadership skills, how many board members participated, what the district goal was, what the indicators of student progress was, whether the goal had been achieved, satisfactory or little or no progress, and any supporting remarks. Okay? And then for the standards, you'll be able to, yes? Oh, they're just to show you that that's where your supporting remarks can go. I didn't do that part of this, so I'm not really sure why they put red marks there. I think it was probably to remind us to talk about the supporting remarks. Okay? I did most of this, but not that one. And then the leadership standards, again, you'll be able to mark off one thing that was the overall rating, the majority opinion of the board, and then you'll be able to put in supporting remarks. Then the last two things we ask you to look at are, what were the, what are the overall strengths of the superintendent in those standards? And we list the six standards. You can check off more than one box. And then you can put in supporting remarks, and you can talk, you'll talk about that in your, in that evaluation period, that, when you're looking at the majority opinion. And then the option is also to provide overall summary evaluation comments. So then of the six standards, which areas might require professional growth or improvement? And again, you can check off more than one box. Okay? And again, please put in supporting remarks, so that you have that opportunity. Your fellow board members have the opportunity to know why those things showed up the way they did. Okay? So the summary conference is going to be the non-conflicted members of the board and the superintendent need to discuss. Rice notice to the superintendent. You're going to share that evaluation prior to the conference. It should be a majority of the total members of the board, or at least all of the non-conflicted members of the board. The minority opinion can be voiced at that time. That's really important, because sometimes board members who, you know, if everybody checked off, or if seven people checked off, you know, that the superintendent had achieved that goal, and if there's somebody that's not, that didn't mark off achieved, they may really want to share with the superintendent why they said that. It's their opportunity to do that. But also understand that anybody who checked off something that's different than the majority opinion may have learned in that identification of the majority opinion why other people thought that it had been achieved, or differently than they did, and may not have that same opinion anymore. Okay? Because sometimes we forget things. It's part of who we are as human beings. And then you'll have the minutes of the executive session that'll reflect that the annual summary conference was held. Needs to be completed by July 1st. Superintendent's going to retain a copy, and the board president will give the board copy to the board attorney. I really will beg you to make sure that you have a copy, because we cannot keep a copy of this. Once December 31st has passed, we have to purge these from our system, because we can't keep compilations, and we can't keep personnel documents. Okay? So once you, the superintendent has done their part, and you've all started to do your individual responses, I'll compile that, send it to the board president or a designee, or you can retrieve it from the website. Rice notice to the superintendent to meet an executive session, just to discuss the compilation, identify that majority opinion. Then the board president or a designee types up that annual performance report, which the template is on our website as well. And, but I'll send that to you in a Word document, so you can actually enter things into it, because the template that's on there is a PDF, and a lot of times people have a problem with entering information into that. Then you'll rice notice the superintendent again for that meeting with the non-conflicted members of the board and the superintendent to meet an executive session for the summary conference. Okay? So who keeps the copy? I already did this. We can't keep a copy of the compiled, so we'll purge it on December 31st. We won't have access to it anymore. We often have board members who want to try and get that, and you would have to go through your board attorney for that, then. Okay? So we suggest very highly that the soup keeps a copy, and the board keeps a copy that goes to the board attorney. So in thinking about the board, the superintendent's evaluation, this is not a once-a-year event. This is something that you're really going to, whether you started in January or July, you're going to look back as a board member, for the time you've been a board member, on the superintendent's performance in any of those areas. Okay? You want to review the process, the performance, over the full year, or since January. You don't want to base it on your last conversation with the superintendent. So I often say, if the superintendent calls you the night before you're doing their evaluation and says, "I got your kid into Harvard, and it's not going to cost you anything," don't give them exemplaries on everything, just because of that. But also likewise, if they call you the night before and say, "I couldn't get your kid into Harvard," and you're paying a full run, whatever school they go to, don't give them needs improvement or unsatisfactory on everything, because you want to look at the whole year. You want to develop a system to, the superintendent's going to develop a system to retain that evidence, and it really is the responsibility of all non-conflicted board members to participate. And you want to have those progress reports, so that you're understanding exactly where the superintendent is in the process at each of those points in time. Okay? Any questions on the superintendent's eval? Okay? If you have questions, call me. Board self-evaluation, this is new. It provides a time when the board can actually do that, have that self-reflection for themselves as board members, as individual board members, and as a whole. It can be completed by all board members. There's no conflicts here. If you're a board member, you can participate. There's no statutory deadline, and it's not required, but it really is a best practice, because it's that one time a year when you can really sit down and say, "I feel like I did a good job at this," or "I feel like I need improvement in these areas, and I think the board did a really great job in this," or "I think the board may need some improvement in these areas." So why do you do it? It improves your governance and your management. The results can be used to develop future board goals. It brings the individuals together as a team, and it also sets a standard for board conduct. Okay? How is it done? It's completed annually. The superintendent can participate as well. There are two components, board and individual. It determines the priorities in the six areas of board governance. There used to be nine. Now there's six. The field service rep will complete your, compile the results, and deliver that to the board president, along with a chart. And I can also come in and review those findings with the board to talk about your areas of strength and areas that you may want to improve upon. And then completion times are really based on your reorganization and goal-setting times. So if you're going to set goals over the summer, you'll probably want to do this before the summer, so that you have this information to then use it for goal-setting. Okay? So when you go to the board self-evaluation, you're going to see, not MSU charter or MSU district, you're going to see your district, because you're going to have to go in, enter your district email account and your password. If you forgot your password, click on Forgot Password. It will send you an email to your district email account. Okay? And then you'll click on your school district. We had, this is showing, too, because some board members are ascending rep to another district, and they have the opportunity to evaluate both superintendents. So in your case, you'll, it will just say, "Then Ellen." Okay? Then you're going to see some directions, and we really want you to understand that enhancing the value of every voice contributing to a meaningful evaluation really requires that all fields are completed. Okay? That just gives you some directions on what you're going to go through, and it should, your responses and comments really should reflect the performance of the board as a team. Okay? Not individual members or staff. If you're putting comments, first of all, the board can only evaluate, non-conflicted members can only evaluate the superintendent. Conflicted members can participate in the evaluation. Sometimes conflicted members put in the board self-evaluation, things that they feel about the superintendent or the business administrator, even though board members do not evaluate the business administrator, only the superintendent. So if there are things in there that are evaluative in any, or could be perceived as evaluative, we would redact those. I would send those to the board president highlighted, and ask you to pass it on to your board attorney. The board attorney agrees that they could be evaluative, then we would redact those and just say evaluative. Okay? The new rating scale is exemplary proficient, the same as the superintendent's evaluation. Okay? They align completely. And the previous ratings were commendable, good, adequate, unsatisfactory, or not observed. Okay? And again, the not observed means that you don't have enough information to have evaluated the board on that. We already talked about this. Your census is in good shape. So now, with the new board self-evaluation, the board president will need to go in and start this off. Just like in the superintendent's evaluation, the superintendent has to start it off. You can't do anything until the superintendent has completed their part. Now the board president must go in. If you don't have any board goals, you would check that box that's circled and say, "Board has no goals." Okay? If you do have goals, you're going to type in the goals, and then you'll be able to put in one board goal, and you don't use a number for that, but you can go up to five board goals. There'll be space for five board goals. Then, once the board president has completed that part, you'll be able to go in and complete your parts as well. Okay? And then it's going to give you these wonderful, this is for the goals, whether it's achieved, satisfactory progress, or little or no progress was made. I do highly recommend that if you have board goals, you've developed some action plans for those, so that you'll be able to, and I always suggest when you ask the superintendent to talk about the progress towards the district goals, that you talk about the progress towards the board goals, because otherwise it's too easy to forget what you did, and you don't discuss them at all then. And you want people to know that you did that, because you got together usually over the summer and created these, and you want to let them know where you are with that. So again, you would be able to mark whether you felt it was achieved, satisfactory progress, or little or no progress was made. We want you to use those previous or next buttons that are below, at the bottom of that page, not the arrows up top that are in, you can't see them here, but that are on your browser. Okay? If you use the browser arrows, it's going to throw you out. It will save wherever you've, wherever you've stopped. If you, you know, had an emergency, you had to get up and leave or something, it will save where you are automatically, and then it will bring, the next time you log in, it'll bring you, it'll self-time out, and then it will bring you to where you left off. Okay? So then there are six standards that we came up with, and they're from the Key Work of School Boards, which is National School Boards Association Key Works. And you'll evaluate the board's overall performance, vision, mission, goals, policy, accountability for student achievement, governance team, relationships and accountability, resource management and oversight, and community leadership. And then there will be sections in those. The standards will have a statement again, just like the superintendent's standard was. And then you'll be able to click those radio buttons, all those little circles of curled radio buttons. I learned that about four years ago. I'd never heard of a radio button before. I just knew you clicked the circle, but. And then you'll be able to put in your team's greatest strength in that particular area, and the team's greatest challenge or opportunity in that area. Okay? Then you'll have an individual, your individual's contribution to the team. There'll be a section for that. And there are 11 indicators. There's no comment section there, so you'll just put down whether you feel you were exemplary, proficient, yada, yada. Okay? And then, what do you consider to be the board's overall greatest strengths that you can build from, and what governance areas do we need to focus on to further our work as an effective board team? Then we'll give you a report. When that's done, it will look something like that, with the numbers just like, it's really modeled parallel to what the superintendent's compilation looks like. So you'll be able to see those. You'll see the greatest strengths. You'll see the greatest challenges. And also, those are based on ratings from one to four. So four is exemplary, proficient is three, area for growth is two points, and unsatisfactory is one. And again, not observed doesn't count either positively or negatively. And then now, we have, instead of just giving you the charts that we've given you in the past, the new chart summarizes really the ratings of the board in the six standards. So you'll see that in that first area, vision, mission, and goals, 36% of the board said that the board was exemplary. 50% said that the board was proficient, and 10% felt that it was an area for growth. Okay? So you'll be able to see those, and really be able to measure, does the board really feel that we're proficient, you know, to, ranging from proficient to exemplary. And in all of these areas, the board did feel that they were considered, that they were considering themselves proficient to exemplary. Okay? And you'll always want to try and get more exemplary the next year. And then we'll give you, this year, you'll only have the chart for this year, because the charts for last year don't pertain to this year, because last year had nine standards, this year has six. So this year, you'll have one set of columns. Next year, you would have two. Okay? These are the resources that we have. So when you click on that, the Quick Resources, or the, yeah, the Quick Resources, you'll be able to click on Superintendent Board Self-Evaluation. It brings you to this link, and you'll be able to look at all of those different samples and FAQs and things like that. There's also a CSA Evaluation Guidebook that you can download in there, that you're welcome to look at as well. Okay? And remember, you're evaluating, in the board's self-evaluation, you're evaluating only the board, your team's performance and efficacy. You're not evaluating the district, and you're not evaluating any staff. And we really hope that you'll use this as an opportunity for really a conscious governance tool for improvement. Okay? What questions might you have?
I did have one.
Sure.
So going back to the slide 40, 42, I think it was?
Forty-two.
Rating individuals' contribution to board team. That would be like me saying how I think I did.
Yes. Yes. So you'll be indicating whether you feel you did a good job, whether you feel you were exemplary, proficient, satisfactory, you know, needs improvement, area for growth, those kinds of things.
Evaluated myself.
On yourself, yes.
So another question. Do boards typically have a lot of board goals that you've seen in others?
So usually, three to five is what we recommend, because we want you to develop board goals. They generally have to do with governance, your own performance, areas that you'd like to improve upon. There could be communication, you know, community engagement. It could be communicating with the community. It could be taking a look at your governance structure. Do you want to use specific committees, or do you want to be a board of the whole? Those kinds of things. You may have policy revision goal, a policy revision goal in there, because you know that you need to be reviewing those policies really at every meeting. And we can also let you know what policies might need to be updated before your Q, your next CUSAC review, if you send that to us for a wellness policy check. You don't have to use our policy system for that. We'll just evaluate whether the policies need to be updated or not, or revised by a certain date for CUSAC. Okay? So those are the kinds of things that you'll really look at when you're talking about improving, you know, the governance structure of the board.
So do other boards that you've seen have a specific cadence? Like, they'll do this every May, or every June, or every July, or November?
So sometimes, so boards that have November elections are sometimes now doing them in September. They'll do the self-evaluation in September, October.
Of the?
Of this, so this year would be September or October, because even your newest members in January would have eight or nine months on the board to evaluate the board.
Right.
Okay? And then sometimes, the board will do their board goals for January to December. Rather than the school year. Okay? Because your district goals are always going to be July 1st to June 30th.
Right.
So it's really up to the board as to how they want to do that. Either way is fine. You can do it in the spring. When I was on the board, we had April elections. That's how long ago that was. And we always did it in conjunction with the superintendent's evaluation, so we knew we got both of them done, and we were good for the rest of the year. And then we would sit down over the summer at a retreat and develop district goals and board goals based on largely what we learned from the superintendent's evaluation and the board's self-evaluation.
I was just thinking from the standpoint, it's, we're in February. And where would that potentially land, or make the most sense to?
So if you wanted to develop some board goals now, you could do that. You could develop, you know, one or two, three. Not more than five, though. We never want the superintendent to have more than five either, because if you have more than five, you can't provide that laser focus on those particular areas. And I often tell the story, when I first came to the association in 2008, my board that I had just come off of to work for NJ SBA, superintendent called me on my way into Trenton, and she said, "So we did goal-setting last night." And I said, "Great. How did that work out for you?" And I said, "Did you have Kathy come in and do your goals?" Because she was the FSR. And she said, "No, the board president decided that he wanted to run that." Knowing who the board president was... Knowing who the board president was, I said, "So how'd that work out for you?" And she said, "I now have 36 goals." Thirty-six!
Thirty-six. Okay.
So I said, "You can't have 36 goals and give attention, you know, primary attention to any one of those." I said, "I'll bet you they're probably more like objectives." So what I would say is, take a look at the goal, at what they've, you know, what you've all agreed to, and see if they can go into three to five buckets. Put everything that's alike into a similar bucket, you know, into a single bucket. And she said, "I can do that." She called me the following week, and she said, "I came up with four buckets, I have four goals, everybody's happy, most of those were really objectives, like you said, anyway." So, you know, but you can't, you can't ask a superintendent to run a district on a daily basis, and then have 36 goals that they have to focus on every single day. It's just, it's not possible. So three to five for soup goal, for district goals, and three to five for board goals. If you have one or two, that's fine.
Okay.
Okay? Your goal could be to create, it's to annually set board and district goals.
[laughing]
It could.
Okay.
Okay? So, and you actually have a sample of, I think you have a sample in the packet, let me see. Of action plans? Did I put in a sample of action plans, which includes? I may not have. If I didn't, I will send to you. Oh, I did not. Okay. I will send to you, I will send you a copy of a template for district and board goals. The district goals would be for the superintendent to do, obviously. The board goals, it has, there's a sample of what the goals could be like, and what the action plans could be like.
Okay. Cool.
Okay. Any other questions?
Guys, any other questions?
I thank you so much for everything you do for your students and your staff and your community. It's a pleasure seeing you again, and I hope to see you again soon. If you have any questions, please don't hesitate to either call me or shoot me an email.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Ann.
[applause]
Oh, okay.
I'm just gonna, so I just want to thank you, Mary Ann, and board members, you know that I was a board member as well before becoming superintendent. I will say, it is, field service reps are very much underutilized resources, I think, generally. So I know some of you might have individual questions about conflicts, or other types of things, or process, or policy, or whatever. Mary Ann is a great resource for those things. School Boards is an organization that we work very closely with on a lot of things. So as we go through these processes, as you go through your trainings, as individual questions come up, please feel free to reach out. You have her contact information, and obviously, she's here for all of you. So, thank you again for being here.
You're welcome. I'm going to say goodnight. Have a good rest of the evening. I hope the rest of your meeting goes well.
[inaudible] You're all right?
You do have a coat, I was just, I'll remind you that.
[inaudible]
The temperature does fluctuate in here. You gotta have layers.
Yeah.
All right, so I'm going to just move very quickly through the SSDS report, which is a Student Safety Data System report. Typically, this report would be given by Ms. Hoy. Unfortunately, she's ill, and so I am, I have the honor of presenting this very exciting information. So I'm going to go through this quickly. Student Safety Data System was previously the EVVRS, which is a required presentation regarding district programming around violence, vandalism, weapons, substance abuse, and then HIB trainings and programs. And this report is required to be given twice annually, and so the first reporting period is September 1st to December 31st. And essentially, it's an overview, so you can see here by school, the number of incidents of different types. There are a couple of categories that the incidents are broken into. The first is the violence, vandalism, substance abuse, weapons, and confirmed HIB incidents, and then, other incidents leading to removal, which might be outside of those, and then, HIB trainings and programs that are associated there. And so you can see those listed, and again, this is from September 1st to December 31st. This does get updated, so there is a reporting of the types of incidents and how, what the occurrences are for those. District trainings and programs, we do a lot that is associated with mandatory training, and then obviously, we have additional work that's done through related service providers or our own staff. So you can see the list there, I'm not going to read it all. A lot of this is required by statute, and so we have mandatory training that's provided to staff members through an electronic portal, and the completion date for those trainings has been moved up over the few years that I've been here, to really being December 31st at this point, or the very beginning of January. And so now, all staff members are also required to not only complete mandatory training, but also do a policy acknowledgement that indicates that they've read through, or they've been made aware of really critical policies and regulations that are, involve things like affirmative action, or hostile work environment, or healthy workplace environment, or other sorts of things. So that is now also baked into, you know, what we do on an annual basis with all staff members. Programs provided, this is more directed types of programming, so rather than just basic trainings, what are some activities that might be done at different schools that focus on practices that, you know, sort of preempt these types of behaviors? Obviously, we want to be moving, and we have been moving, in a more restorative practices type of approach, right? Which doesn't mean that there's no discipline, but it means that we have to build very strong relationships with students first, and that's the level that we want to restore the relationship with our students back to, if there's some sort of incident that occurs. And so, restorative practices is a really widely misunderstood sort of framework, but it really comes from the fact that if you start from a very strong place of a relationship with someone, and then they break that relationship in some way by, you know, violating the student code of conduct, or creating some, you know, active harassment, intimidation, or bullying, that we then work with them to get them back to that point of that strong relationship of trust and compassion and empathy and all of those things. So HIB investigations here for the beginning of the year was actually very, very, just a really wonderful beginning of the year in terms of these incidents. We have seen an uptick in the second half of the year of these types of incidents, and it's very typical that in the spring especially, you know, we will see more of this. But the beginning of the year was very quiet, which is always nice. And then, here is the list, the really exhaustive list of the types of trainings and programs that are done. This again is the inclusion of mandatory training, and then also, programs that we have Week of Respect, School Violence Awareness Week, Red Ribbon Week, which are all, you know, outlined in code. We've been working with Urban Assembly, as we've discussed. We've had mixed results with Urban Assembly, but there has been a focus at least on the types of practices that could be beneficial to building a positive school climate. And then, we've been working, I've been working with the Teacher Climate and Culture Committee, which is a grant-funded group of staff members that will be, will continue to work with. The grant actually ends at the end of this month, the grant period, but we will continue that work through Title II, and ensure that we have those conversations. And then, this is essentially just a school-by-school outline, you know, the many of the same things that you see sort of every year. Trainings are really very much the same that we do each year. We do trainings with new staff members as well, at New Staff Orientation. And then, we have programs that are slightly different at each school level. Obviously, PBSIS is part of Faber Elementary School's sort of DNA, and they've been doing that for some years, and sort of re-engaged with that process a little bit. There are now incentive programs at the middle school for various things, as we try to kind of build capacity in that, in that respect. And then, Ms. Hoy, as the anti-bullying coordinator, works with the anti-bullying specialists at each of the schools, on a lot of training that's associated with those types of things. And she herself is also required to do a lot of training on, you know, trends in suicide prevention and other kinds of things. So here's the high school one. So that's it. And this will be available online, if it's not already, so please feel free to review it, and then I'm happy to answer any questions as they come up. All right? All right, thank you.
All right, I will continue with the superintendent's report. So a couple of really important items. Today was the governor's budget address, and so there was a lot of fanfare around that, and a lot of sort of curiosity what was going to happen. We did actually get information from his office through NJASA regarding the state of the budget for next year. During the address, basically, he said a couple of things, which I'll just share here. He is committed to fully funding the school funding formula, first and foremost, so that is a good sign for everybody. He's recommending that this is the single largest investment in education in history this year. There's $36 million that's being recommended for new preschool expansion, and this is obviously a big thing, because we are, our entire preschool expansion opportunities are based on the idea that we, that we're getting school, state aid for these seats. And so, if the aid goes away, then the seats go away, because we just, we can't possibly afford, you know, that program without that additional state aid. And then, there is also, he also mentioned cellphone ban, and grant funds that were going to be used for piloting with schools that are interested in doing this sort of a phone-free school environment. So from NSA, from NJASA, we got a couple of much more sort of detailed pieces of information. K-12 direct aid is planning to be increased to $12 billion, which is, out of the $22 billion in total education funding, which represents over a third of the entire state budget, which is, which is just a mind-boggling sort of understanding. Preschool funding reached $1.3 billion, which is up 550 million since 2018. And then, also, school employee benefits supports total $6.3 billion, which is super important. This is for TPATH and Social Security. This is basically the pension system. So we talk about fully funding the pension system and keeping that solvent. That's obviously a huge piece of information. And then, total school aid since he took office was up 48%. So Don Ellen has been in a very good place for the last couple of years, because it was historically underfunded for many, many years. And so, the last couple of years, we've gotten a tremendous amount of additional state aid, which was basically owed to us, based on the formula. At the same time that we've gotten that increase in state aid, there are districts across the state that have received like $12 million or $20 million less in funding. And the way the budgets work, you know, the budget addresses today, by the end of the day on Thursday, all of the state aid numbers come out. So we will get, you know, we're anticipated to get a, you know, the worksheets with all of our funding, and then, we have essentially two weeks to put together a budget and present the tentative budget. And this is all, you know, the deadlines are all in code and things like that. So for us, doing that with more money is a very easy thing. For districts that have lost $10 million, it's basically an impossible ask. And these districts, many of whom are in Middlesex County, some of whom are in Middlesex County, South Brunswick being one of them, sort of the most prominent one, throughout the state, you've seen a lot about Jackson, Tom's River, they've had to sell schools, they've had to cut busing and cut programs, make things pay-to-play, all of those types of things. Lakewood, obviously, which is a very, very unique district, is bankrupt and has been borrowing money for the last 10 years just to make payroll. And so, one of the key things that has been fought for in legislation has been to try to limit the amount of reduction that these districts are going to be receiving. They're not going to get their money back. But there is a, there's commentary about possibly limiting the reduction to 3%. And so, if you, if you received, you know, $100 million, then you would receive no less than $97 million in the subsequent year, which will at least be a little bit more helpful for those districts. For us, we are very, very close to being fully funded, according to the formula. I think we're 98% or something like that. We're anticipating, hoping for flat state aid at a minimum. I don't necessarily anticipate that we will see a decrease in state aid. We will certainly, our overall state aid number is going to go up regardless, because we're going to receive much more funding for preschool. But the rest of our budget, we're hoping at least remains flat. If we do receive a little bit of a bump, that's a good thing. But I had a conversation with the DEA leadership this week, last week, certainly not anticipating any cuts. We're not anticipating any program cuts, staff cuts, or loss of services of any sort. We've been very deliberate about building things out to help students and help families and help those who are in need, and I anticipate that all of those things are going to remain. So that's a good thing. There is, I'll just say one other thing, which is that there are going to be some new grants and education initiatives that we'll certainly hop on. One of them is continued funding for high-impact tutoring. And so, we've actually received two grants related to high-impact tutoring. We're running the second one right now, throughout the end of the year, which has been very beneficial. We also, there is a $3 million for phone-free schools program that's going to be anticipated, and then, continued funding for the computer science education, which we have received two rounds of funding for. Literacy screening grants, which I'm definitely interested in us applying for, because we now have a very strong, robust screening program that can be used as a model throughout the state. The Office of Learning and Recovery, which I'm not quite sure what that is, but that's a new initiative that they're looking for. Student Mental Health Services and School Security Improvements. So we're, we're sort of on the forefront of a lot of these initiatives. The Student Mental Health Services, the fact that we've been able to transition away from a related service provider and build our school-based wellness program, which is in its infancy and has a lot of work to do, I think is a strong, a strong program. And obviously, from a school security improvement, we've been a district that has invited a lot of superintendents and security experts in to look at, you know, for example, the keyless entry system, and the security system, and the way that we're using Genetek, and the types of enhancements that we can do with that. So all of that is to say, education is in good shape this year. This is the last year of Murphy's term, and obviously, I think as a sitting governor... So we're, we're sort of on the forefront of a lot of these initiatives. The Student Mental Health Services, the fact that we've been able to transition away from a related service provider and build our school-based wellness program, which is in its infancy and has a lot of work to do, I think is a strong, a strong program. And obviously, from a school security improvement, we've been a district that has invited a lot of superintendents and security experts in to look at, you know, for example, the keyless entry system and the security system and the way that we're using Genetek and the types of enhancements that we can do with that. So all of that is to say, education is in good shape this year. This is the last year of Murphy's term, and obviously, I think as a sitting governor, he wants to have a good showing to help his party in the future. So this is sort of anticipated that this would occur, but from a very practical, pragmatic perspective, I think we're in good shape for next year. We will, as I said, get our state aid funding by the end of the day on Thursday, and then we will share the tentative budget presentation on March 11th, which is our next board meeting. Okay? Any questions about the budget?
Not necessarily about the budget, but you brought something to our attention about Urban Assembly. You said it's been met with mixed results. Can you expand on that?
Sure. So yeah, I mean, I, I'm not sure that I want to go into a lot of detail about it right now. I think it's, when we think about the types of things that we look, you know, school districts have costs that increase at a much higher percent than 2 percent each year. Personnel costs, you know, transportation costs for, for us, it would be out-of-district student transportation, obviously, out-of-district placements for students with special needs, health benefits, right? These are costs that increase. So when you think about a flat budget even, right, you have these ballooning costs in other areas, which means that you've got to tighten in other areas that you might have spent funds. So Urban Assembly right now, and actually, a number of things are paid for through grants. They're either paid for through ESAR funds, which have now, you know, totally gone away, or they've been paid for through competitive grants that we've written or, you know, other types of grant funds. We have to take a look at all of the programs that we are funding through those programs and determine what's going to be the most valuable to sustain. And so Urban Assembly is one of those groups that, you know, their services are adding a certain amount of value. We have to determine whether that value is worth spending what will be a smaller pot of funding to maintain.
Thank you.
Yep. So a couple of other items just for the superintendent's report. We have, we're beginning our transition at the high school away from Naviance or Naviance. We're onboarding a program called School Links, which is going to be a, it's a college and career planning software. Naviance is owned by Power School, and Power School has had a lot of issues with privacy and support and other types of things, and so we're excited about School Links. It's kind of an up-and-comer in the field. It's in a lot of Texas districts. It's been around for probably seven or eight years at least. It's a lighter tool that students will, that we anticipate students will engage with much more highly, and it has a tie-in to Common App and all of the kinds of functionality that we would need. We, the district was approved for Lincoln Middle School to run a school-wide Title I program next year. This is something that, we're in the first year now of Faber. We applied last year. And what the difference between the two Title I program types, there's a targeted Title I program, and then there's a school-wide program. And districts that are over 40 percent economic disadvantage can run school-wide programs, and what that means is that essentially, every student in the school is considered eligible for Title I-funded services. So when you run an after-school program, anybody can come, right? It doesn't have to just be targeted to certain students. So it's been a boon for Faber because we can just expand who we're inviting to these programs and providing services for. The same thing will be true now at the middle school next year, and then we will complete the application throughout next year for the high school for the subsequent year for '26, '27. Some grants updates. We have the expanding access to climate change grant. There is, we had a staff member from Rutgers, a professor, doing hydroponics work, which Douglas mentioned, came in and worked with the teachers on the 18th, and the second day is tomorrow. And then on March 12th, there's a convening at Rutgers, who is our sort of university partner. It will be attended by the acting commissioner, Kevin Damer. And the Faber team, led by Ms. Gunther and Mr. Tennant and Ms. Drapkin, will be presenting on the hydroponics work that's happening at Faber, which is super cool, obviously. We're also waiting to hear about an additional $15,000 in funding, which we believe we're going to receive, and that will allow us to formally bring that climate change education work to the K-2 group. Even though those kids have been working on it, it's been sort of informal, so this will give them more access to really get involved in that work. Our computer science grant is going well. We have a couple of folks that are doing master's programs in computer science education. We also have our Faber after-school program, which is being run by Ms. Brown. We have middle school work done by Mr. Peluso designing and testing catapults. And at the high school, Mr. Santiago is doing the Girls Who Code Club, as well as computer science targeted support for AP students, and then some general coding and robotics work. We have a visit from the Department of Education coming up on March 6th, and then we're looking at parent engagement events. And this now runs through the summer, so we can also take some of these funds and run some summer programming with that as well. Our teacher climate and culture grant, as I mentioned, the grant period is a very, very short grant period. It was maybe four months, the entire grant, which is just unheard of, but that actually runs out at the end of this month. We have, we've held a number of meetings. We've focused on a couple of AI programs and some curriculum management software that we think is going to, will help some things. So we've, we're sort of slowly rolling some of that out. And then Saturday, we had a really great convening. We invited staff members, we paid staff members. We invited staff members to attend a paid professional development opportunity that was led by Evelyn Swift, who is a principal in Manchester Township. She's an elementary principal who's had sort of just an extraordinary wide range of jobs, K-12. And the session that she led was resilience in educational leadership. So really, it's about educator leadership, teacher leadership, the type of systems and structures that can be put together in schools to ensure that staff members feel supported and that they have a voice in, you know, the educational program. We had over 40 staff members attend, which is incredible. So I'm extremely grateful to the staff members who did attend. The feedback that we've received is very, very positive, also very constructive about the types of things that we can do with future sessions based on the experience that the staff members had. And obviously, Ms. Drapkin had a tremendous role in putting this together, so I'm very thankful for her. We're also thankful to Donellen Bagel, which provided a really nice donation for the teachers, which was great. And, and yeah, I mean, I think it was just, it was a wonderful session overall, free from kind of the daily grind of like, you go to work and then you've got like a two-hour afternoon session, but you're kind of burned out from the first half of the day. This was Saturday, 9 to 12, people showed up at 8:30, 8:45, the mood was really good, you know, and then it was a really interactive, positive session. So, and then, you know, the last piece of that, that grant work is our work with Studer, which is ongoing with goal-setting, and we're actually meeting with Melissa Matarazzo on Thursday for our Q2 review, and then talk about next year and, you know, closing the year out strong and all of that. So that's very exciting stuff. High-impact tutoring grant is the last grant that we have access to, and we have that, just a very narrowly tailored program for Wilson Instruction that's happening at Faber throughout the end of May. That's an after-school program. We have ESL adult classes are running. We've had, we have over 36 participants now, which is incredible. We also just completed access testing at the middle school. High school is almost done. Faber has a while to go because of the number of students and the way that students at that level are tested. And then we also had 13 students pass the SEAL of Bili literacy, which is up from four students last year. My first year in the district, I brought the SEAL of Bili literacy in, and I think we had something like six students. Last year was a smaller year. This year, we're up to 13, and that's really do a lot to the outreach that we did to parents. And we had a Saturday session also where kids could come in and test and take the stamp test and that sort of thing. And then my last item is the preschool expansion. We have a, we have our rooms set up, and we have our budget, which we'll put together once we get our numbers on Thursday, but we are holding an in-person registration on Saturday, March 8th. It's actually in this room, and it's from 9 to 12. We have, almost all of our seats that we're, that we've allocated for next year are anticipated to be filled already. So we're going to be above 90 percent for our universe, which is 150, 160 kids. And the registration event will allow people to start to engage with the district, meet Beatrice Jimenez, who's our community parent involvement specialist, meet Karen Riggi, who is our preschool CPIS, and, you know, we'll have other folks here from the community to support that registration process. So there's a lot of, a lot of great stuff going on. I'll also just add that I spent today in Trenton. I had, maybe it was the third or fourth convening of the Evaluation Working Group, and so we're at, we're working with folks from different agencies and organizations across the state on SGOs and teacher evaluation practices generally. So there's a lot of, a lot of really nice conversations happening about education, you know, throughout the state. Sometimes we don't hear about them every day because of sort of the daily grind, but there's a lot to be proud of and thankful of in terms of the work that we do. So I certainly feel that way. Lastly, I'll just do the enrollment report real quick. We are, once again, up a number of students. We're up 20 students from the beginning of the year. We're now at 1,416, including our private preschool providers, 1374 in the district, which is actually the same number that we ended the school year last year with. So we, we have 92 students in kindergarten, 93 in first grade, 91 in second grade, 97 in third grade, 91 in fourth grade, 100 in fifth grade. Middle school is 109, 119, and 108. And the high school is 104, 97, 112, and 99. So again, a total of 1374. We're up 20 students from the beginning of the year, and then we've got the 42 students who are at A-plus Academy through the preschool expansion grant. So we are serving a lot of students in the town, and we're very excited to be doing so.
Thank you, Mr. Ross. Would it be fair to say that we are definitely getting kids from, from our color?
Yeah.
What was that? Would it be fair to say that with the new construction projects, are we finally seeing the influx of kids?
I don't think it's, I think that the projections were actually pretty accurate as of right now. There was a report that was done in October or November as part of Mayor Solento's sort of town hall meeting, borough, you know, meeting, and the projections were pretty spot-on.
Okay.
There are a lot of other projects, though, that are being built.
Yes.
And sort of every, every day, there's, you know, I'm hearing about a new, a new dual-use, you know, commercial residential building that's coming up on North Avenue or something like that. And we will continue to see, you know, families moving in. The immigration question has been an interesting one that, you know, I'm not sure how that's going to affect us in the long run. We have really maintained strong relationships with Hispanic families that are new to the country, that are, you know, new to the area, and they're, you know, they are accessing the kinds of services and, you know, functions that we provide, like the meals and, you know, other types of things. So, you know, as long as we make people feel welcome, I think that, you know, we'll continue to be able to serve them properly. And with that, that is my report.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Ross.
Thank you.
Any questions, guys? All right. So moving along to item number nine, public comments. So the Board invites public comments on agenda items only for members of the community. In accordance with Board Policy 0167, public comment sections are intended to provide an opportunity for members of the public to express themselves on school matters of community interest. The Board and administration will be taking notes during public comment, but will not provide substantive responses to questions or concerns raised by individual speakers. If necessary, the superintendent may provide a brief response after the entire public comment period is completed. The Board appreciates and welcomes feedback from the community, but is not at liberty to engage in a back-and-forth dialogue with members of the public during this portion of the meeting. Prior to making your public comment, please state your name and municipality. Please note that all statements must be directed to the presiding officer. Please come to the microphone at this time if you'd like to make comments on agenda items only. Last call. Okay, moving along. Item number 10, education. So we're going to hear about the Education Committee report, and I'll turn the floor over to Ms. Ibach.
The Donellen Board of Education Committee Agenda was, our meeting was conducted on February 18th. In attendance were Ms. Howard, Ms. Shimpf, Ms. Ibach, Mr. Gendrono, Mr. Drapkin, and, Ms. Drapkin, and Mr. Ross. And during the discussion, we discussed information about a number of items on tonight's agenda, including the approval of special education programs for county office record-keeping, a survey being given to some DHS students about civic engagement, and the HIB presentation, a plan to have eighth and ninth-grade students visit Middlesex College to help build the concept of college as a postgraduate pathway. Also, we discussed a wide range of updates from Ms. Drapkin on professional development, grants information, committee work, after-school programming, curriculum, resources, and other items, and a variety of other confidential matters.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Ibach. Moving on to item number 11, education action items. Looking for a motion to approve items 11A through G as a block?
Move to approve items 11A through G as a block.
Second.
Okay. Open for questions or comments? I just have to say, if the Environmental Club would need a chaperone, I would be happy to join them in Camelback. Any, any questions or comments? Okay. All right, Mr. Pepe, can you please call the roll?
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Condit?
Yes.
Ms. Ibach?
Yes.
Dr. Gendrono?
Yes.
Mr. Sotinoi?
Yes.
Ms. Shimpf?
Yes.
Mrs. Shep?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, wonderful. Moving on to item number 12, personnel discussion items. So I'll give an update here. So the Personnel Committee met on February 18th. In attendance were myself as chair, Mr. Anderson, Mrs. Shep, and Mr. Ross. We discussed the number of items, including open positions and staffing in the district, approval for Mr. Marenberg to complete work on a wide range of safety and security items, approval for Mr. Zukowski to oversee an independent study for a student who needs an additional course to meet graduation requirements, and a number of confidential items. And that sums up the Personnel Committee meeting. So moving on to item 13, personnel action items. Looking for a motion to approve items 13A through L as a block?
I move to approve items A through L as a block.
Second.
Okay, open for questions or comments?
Yes. I see that we had this eighth annual women's leadership conference on here.
Which item?
Is I.
Okay.
And we only have one of our, we have six women in leadership positions, don't we, in the district? And only one seems to, were they not asked if they wanted to go?
Information was shared regarding it. Ms. Drapkin is actually presenting. Mr. Drapkin is actually presenting at the, at the event.
But none of our other female administrators wanted to go? Did they not respond, or? I see that you ended up on there.
We had, yeah, I will be there. There is another board meeting, so, between, between now and then. So, it certainly, yep.
Any other questions or comments? Last call? Okay. Mr. Pepe, could you please call the roll?
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Condit?
Yes.
Ms. Ibach?
Abstain.
Ms. Ibach, did you mean to abstain to everything or to the one item? You can vote on, on the rest if you'd like.
Okay. So, on item E?
Mm-hmm.
Sorry.
Yep.
Yeah, you have to vote on the rest.
So, are you saying yes to the rest?
Yes, sorry, to the rest.
Dr. Gendrano?
Yes.
Mr. Satanoi?
Yes.
Ms. Shimpf?
Yes.
And Mrs. Shep?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes.
Okay, wonderful. Moving on to item number 14, Operations Discussion Items and the Operations Committee Report. I'll turn the floor over to Mrs. Condit.
Thank you. The Operations-
You got to bring it a little closer.
Sorry. Got to hear it ring.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
The Operations Committee met on February 18th, and in attendance was Mr. Walker, Mr. Satanoi, Mr. Gendrano, Mr. Pepe, Mr. Ross, Ms. Drapkin, and myself. And discussed a number of items, including the creation of a law enforcement unit as per the recommendation of the Memorandum of Agreement with Law Enforcement. An update on budget planning for the 2025-2026 school year, a wide range of facilities updates, information about the district's universal pre-K facilities expansion grant, and a variety of confidential matters. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Condit. So, moving on to item number 15, Operations Action Items. Looking for a motion to approve 15A through J as a block?
Move to approve items A through J as a block?
Second.
Okay, open for questions, comments? Last call? Okay, Mr. Pepe, could you please call the roll?
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Condit?
Yes.
Ms. Ibach?
Yes.
Dr. Gendrano?
Yes.
Mr. Satanoi?
Yes.
Ms. Shimpf?
Yes.
Mrs. Shep?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, wonderful. Thank you. Moving on to item number 16, Old Business. Is there anything from previous meetings that we'd like to bring back up to discuss? Or to continue to discuss? Take that as a, oh, please go ahead.
Just a reminder, for future purposes, the item I brought up earlier in regards to leveraging some of those grants to leverage emergency operations exercises and items like that so that we can leverage some of the benefits to enhance school safety as well as operational readiness and recovery?
Okay. Duly noted. Any other old business? Okay, moving on to number 17, New Business. I would just like, oh, so let's, actually, did anyone have a comment for new business?
Just a comment. After Ms. Lopez's report, maybe we could encourage a trip to the library for our younger students to get library cards. It could be a walking trip in the spring. Help us out with new readers and help our library out as well.
Great idea. That sounds great. Any other comments or any new business or anything anyone wants to bring up? I was just going to add, with the presentation that we had this evening with Marion Friedman, perhaps, you know, we should think more. I know that we haven't done a board self-evaluation. Definitely not in the time that I've been here. So, we, it's something that I think we should discuss. We don't have to discuss it tonight. We could certainly think about it, and when we reconvene next time, have some points, have some discussion about that, I should say, and see about moving that forward. Because I think it's something that, now that we have good stability within our board, to be able to devalue ourselves, to see how we're doing and improve on the way that we're doing the stuff that we do. Any other comments, guys? Okay. Moving on to item 18, President's Remarks. I think I've said enough. And then, moving on to 19, Public Comments on Any Issue or Any Topic. The Board invites public comment on any issue or topic from members of our community. In accordance with Board Policy 0167, public comment sections are intended to provide an opportunity for members of the public to express themselves on school matters of community interest. The Board and administration will be taking notes during public comment, but will not provide substantive responses to questions or concerns raised by individual speakers. If necessary, the superintendent may provide a brief response after the entire public comment period is completed. The Board appreciates and welcomes feedback from the community, but is not at liberty to engage in the back-and-forth dialogue with members of the public during this portion of the meeting. Prior to making your public comment, please state your name and municipality. Please note that all statements must be directed to the presiding officer. Please come to the microphone at this time if you'd like to make any comments, make comments on any issue or any topic. Last call? That's a chance. Don't all run up quickly at one, you know, at once. Okay. All right, so, moving on to item number 20, Executive Session Number Two. So, the Donnellan Board of Education will now adjourn into executive session to discuss items that fall within specific exceptions to the Open Public Meetings Act, CNJSA, 10-4-12P. The confidential matters discussed by the Board during this executive session include items related to individual privacy, collective bargaining agreements, tactics or techniques utilized in protecting public safety and property, pending or anticipated litigation, as well as personnel. So, at this time, looking for a motion to go into executive session.
Move to go to exec.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so, we are going to move to executive session, and we will adjourn from there. So, thanks, everyone, for coming tonight. We will see you on March 11th, same bat time, same bat channel.